Ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. Could I have your attention, please?
Okay. That's not far away.
Are the mics on? Can you hear me in the back? Can we, Devin? Can you check them? Oh, I think it's on now. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council meeting and the joint meeting with the School Board of the City of Hudson, or the School District of Hudson. We'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. The purpose of this meeting tonight is for us to sit down as a group and discuss the possibility of what the school is going to present to tonight to us and review that. There will be no decisions, from my understanding, made tonight. We're not going to take public input. And this meeting was set up between Jamie and I and with the rest of the School Board and the School District and the City Council. So, we're going to have a very hopeful, productive meeting and welcome, everyone, and make sure that board members and council members, you speak into the mic when you, so, and they're on all the time, so you don't have to put them on and off.
Thank you.
So be careful what you say under your breath. So, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Jamie Johnson. Jamie?
Thank you, Alan. And I want to thank the rest of the City Council for being willing to meet with us. And I think this is an opportunity we have to come together as a community, try and talk about how we could possibly have a win-win solution for where the next high school would be built. And I guess part of, you know, what we're here tonight, as Alan said, no decisions are going to be made. Hopefully, we have a lot of good questions and issues raised that we can address and move forward. That's, the whole idea is the spirit of cooperation and moving forward, not dwelling on the past. So, we're not here to talk about other properties or other possible solutions for the secondary space. We're specifically talking about a proposal regarding St. Croix Meadows. And with that, one may ask, why are we here talking about that? Well, the last couple of years, since the issue was last raised, there's been changes, both in the district, changes in leadership, changes in the city. Development is ongoing process. And over these last two years, the Board of Education has been narrowing the options and defining what exactly was going to be built. If you recall, last time this issue was raised, there was not a specific option plan in place for the secondary space. And we've done, that's what we've been doing over the last couple of years, is narrowing that to a three-year high school. And our new Vice President of the School Board, Brian Bell, is going to tell us about that. But in addition, we've looked at potential sites. And this has been a search that's gone on, really, for years. But over the last 20 months or so, we've been looking at other options other than St. Croix Meadows and trying to come up with an option that is the most cost-effective for the taxpayer. That's been our primary objective. And after looking at these other options that, throughout the district, that would include the town of St. Joe, the town of Troy, and the town of Hudson, looking at those other options always brought us back to what looks like the most cost-effective. And when others began talking about a potential multi-use concept for St. Croix Meadows, this is what kind of spurred the idea of coming up with a different proposal and a different approach. So, what, again, we believe, that is, the Board of Education believes that both the city and the School District taxpayers can benefit. And that's, in the end, that's what we want to benefit, is taxpayers of both. And obviously, there's some overlap there with probably a good portion of the School District's tax base being in, in the city. So, with that, Brian, would you introduce the idea of why we came to, or how we came to the three-year high school and how we proposed that would be used?
Sure. Thanks, Jamie. And again, thanks to the City Council, Mayor Burchill, for having this, hosting this meeting tonight. So, so, one thing that's changed is the Board has looked at, you know, multiple, multiple different configurations and alternatives for a high school, for a secondary kind of space for education. And out of all those proposals, after getting some community input and deliberating as a board, the proposal that we've moved forward to, to put up and refine is a three-year high school that's expandable. And a three-year high school would, then in the district, the current high school would become an eight-nine, and we would move the central office back into the high school, and would also move IT back into the high school. And then we're able to sell the current central office that's sitting on Brackey Drive. And the middle school will then become a six-seven. So, the middle school will be a six-seven, the high school will be a, would be eight-nine, and then we'd move the central office into the current high school. So, it's really important also that we wanted this to be a strategic long-term plan, is that we want this to be a 25-plus-year vision, and we want this to be the, kind of, the right, you know, right for the district. We also want it to be right for whatever, for the partner that we're, that we're building this facility or school in. We really want to make sure this is an opportunity to have a win-win. And so, so that's kind of the current, the proposal that we have right now for a building. So, what, the next part of our presentation, what we want to do is talk about, talk about very briefly what the proposal was, but then kind of pivot very quickly to what the new proposal is and gain, gain, you know, just questions and feedback from the, from the City Council and from the School Board members and have that conversation. Just want to point out that we have, right now, we have no agreement with the seller of St. Croix Meadows. We've had discussions with their agent, but we have no, there's no contract we have right now with St. Croix Meadows. So, if there's any other questions, any questions on, on that particular portion of the agenda? Any questions for me on, on that? Well, Jamie, you want to maybe show the proposal you want? Should we hand out the handouts now, or?
Oh, yeah, that would be a good idea.
Want me to handle those for you?
And as Brian said, the, and as I said earlier, we don't want to dwell on the past, but we want to just show where we were in, let's see, May of 2012.
Jamie?
Yes?
Bring my microphone over so that you can be picked up. So everybody can hear. Either hold it or...
All right. I think this works now? Is that, yeah, everyone can hear me? All right. As we said, this was the proposal in May of 2012. And again, this is the past. We're not dwelling on the past, but its primary purpose is to show that instead of, the initial plan was for the School District to buy everything within the black dotted corridor, which is 130 acres, more or less. And from that plan, the idea was possibly 10 acres would be sold later for commercial or city use. And so, originally, all 130 acres was going to come off the tax rolls. All right? Now, we've progressed in, to an idea that it's more of a balanced approach, more of a multi-use concept with, in this way, the school purchasing only a portion of the property and remaining 33 acres for what we believe, more or less, would be taxable, usable development land. And that breaks down, here would be, the school's portion would be 63 acres, the development 33. We've got this public street through here would be about two acres. The stormwater area, again, is plus or minus 10 acres. This, again, would require some further refinement, refinement, more details. This is more of a concept than a final plan. But the idea is to see if this is worthwhile moving forwards, that we spend the dollars necessary to get answers and details on that part. The steep slopes that we're talking about are the 20 acres on the rear of what would be the building, and then the two acres of wetland area here, which is, I think, contiguous to what the current building zone is. And again, the idea is that the school would be built around what is the existing structure of St. Croix Meadows. And Brian, do you want to take, then, talk about the cost?
Sure.
Thank you. So, the cost on the, on this proposal, again, these are all estimated costs. We don't, you know, again, we don't have a contract or any kind of agreement with, with the seller. But we're estimating that the land cost to the district would be 4.6 million at $50,000 per acre. That's a significant decrease over the, the original proposal. The original proposal was, was over $63,000 per acre and was, I have a note on the board, was 8.25 million. So, went from 8.25 million down to 4.6 million is this, with this, this proposal. I won't go over all, and then we have some demolition costs, some offside road improvements and other costs. So, the, the total cost of this project from a land standpoint would be somewhere between 5.5 million and 6 million, which is, again, significantly reduced off of the, off of the, the early proposal. There is also the, kind of, the value of the existing, existing building, which would offset some of our construction costs in the future. So, so that's kind of the, that's kind of the cost of this proposal. Any questions on that? So, I'd like to just make a couple of comments and maybe just have a discussion, then. That'd be all, Kim. So, some of the things that we thought about in this, on this proposal, some of the, kind of, the considerations we went into, and you may, these may be very apparent. Again, we're not developers, but as we, as we sat and we said, you know, what could be something that would work, would be a win-win for both the city and for the School District. A couple of things came to mind, is that we believe that having, having the school building here is kind of a tenant in this, and taking just this parcel, we think a couple of things could happen is, A, we could increase the value of kind of the commercial property south of Carmichael, just by, you know, driving more traffic. You think about a high school and, and not only day-to-day, but also, you know, the use of athletic facilities and things like that, which is, could just drive more traffic, increase on value of property south of Carmichael. The second thing we were considering is that it could accelerate development of this, of this parcel, because it, it's a couple of things. A developer would be more attracted in it, given that we've taken, the, the building itself can be a liability to some developers, and if we can take that kind of liability and turn it into an asset, that's kind of off the table, and they can focus now on, on this, this commercial space here, again, with higher traffic and potentially accelerate that development. So, getting some tax revenues coming quicker because of the, of kind of the tenant being the high school. So, those are just some considerations and love to, I'm going to sit down and just have a conversation on this. So, thank you.
Questions? Yep. Speak into the mic.
Between the two maps, just because I don't know how they, in the first, the first map that was done, you have a wetland pond area that almost stretches across the whole bottom, and now the second map, it's gone. So, is that, was that wetland pond area going to be created? Is, does it exist now?
So, Mary, that's one of the design considerations. That was, in our early proposals, that, that was surveyed as kind of a wetlands area. We, we believe that there may be a way to kind of design the site so we can take that land back and have that developable property. So, that's, that's a estimate right now. That would have to be, that still would have to go through kind of further kind of design and review, so.
So, if that is not able to be done, then what happens?
Yeah.
You're going to lose, I mean, because you'll lose all that?
Yeah, it would squeeze, it would, it would, it would make the, it would squeeze, it would squeeze both of these parcels.
So, how much acreage is that, that's a possibility you could lose?
We, you know, in order to make this work, that's, that, that area, we have to gain that area back, you know, so.
I understand, but what's the current acreage that might not be there?
Yeah. I'm not sure exact, the exact amount of acre that, that parcel, do you know, Jamie?
No. Well, other than looking at the two maps and the estimate, again, the concept wasn't anymore defined the first time around, but it was about eight acres, it appears to be the difference, whereas before, the usable development was, had hoped to be, you know, in that 90 acre, now we're hoping that we can get it to 98. Again, what we've learned in doing our due diligence on other properties in the district is many times lands that are rumored to be wetlands turn out not to be so. And there are some areas that are lower line that can be redesigned, others that can't. But we're not developers and we're not, certainly not engineers, to the point of knowing exactly how that would work. But nor for this to work, we would need the stormwater area to try and be confined, and that's why it was located in a place where it could be shared.
Sure.
By the developed parcels, commercially developed parcels or residential, however it gets developed.
So, if that's approximately eight acres, if that can't be reconfigured, if it can't be filled in, or however you're going to have to handle that, you'd be down to 55 acres, basically.
It could be.
Approximately.
It could be. Yeah, again, we're, we're looking at what would it take to get this to move forward? And if that's, ends up being a block to this, then that will be a block. But we need to know whether we can go forward to get that analysis done.
Yeah, I get that. I just wanted to understand what the possible obstacles are.
But your math is right. 63 minus eight would be 55. Yes.
So, Jamie and Brian, on the taxable development lot, it says 33 acres there. And again, that's, you know, Jamie and I have talked about a developer or someone that can come in, and we're not developers either. The city isn't. I, and I, I think Jamie mentioned the School District is not developers either. Just some of the, and Denny Darnold couldn't be here tonight. He had another, he had a family function that he asked if he could be excused from this, and thought that was good, because it was, you know, short notice on this meeting. So, he isn't here tonight. But just trying to look at this, again, having looked at a few development plans over the years, we've got one access in, and I don't think that'll work from a fire area and all those kinds of things. And how this gets developed in and out is something that I think we need more than, this is going to be commercial. We need somebody to tell us what's going to go there, what is the zoning requested for that area? And so, I, I think that's something that I would like to see from, from the School District, or whoever is the developer on that piece of property, to say, are we going to try and do commercial, multifamily, whatever the best fit is.
I have a question, I guess. How is it zoned now?
It's zoned commercial. I believe it, it's zoned commercial.
Zoned commercial.
Yep.
Is the, the seller willing to just sell this and then leave the commercial to whoever's whim, or?
Yes. That's my understanding. The discussions with the seller's representative is that they would be willing to do that.
And the other question is, is the stormwater area, is that a requirement, the plus or minus 10 acres, or just an opportunity?
That's why we need Danny here to answer those questions. I would think that a lot of that's required for the space, the size of space that you have in the parking. I think one of the concerns that I would have on the, on the, leaving that land undeveloped, I'd like to see a plan for the total parcel, because one of the concerns that I had the last time was our loss of tax revenue. And if you take the main building off and 50, 62 acres, we're down to 33 acres of raw land. The value and our tax revenue out of that is going to be significantly less than we're receiving right now. So, I'd like to see a plan to have that developed at the same time. So, it isn't, we'll leave this empty and then 10 years later, we'll develop it. I'd like to see a developer come in, put his money into it, and say, I want to develop this thing.
Alan, can I correct something from what I was saying? If you look at the map, the wetland pond area kind of extends between both of us. So, for approximately eight acres, eight acres, I would take probably two for the city and...
At the city.
Or, no, I'm saying, two, two acres of that would affect the commercial area.
Commercial, yep.
And four, or six acres would probably affect the school area. I mean, I'm guessing, maybe it's three and five, but that would even put less than 33 acres for a commercial and less than, you know. My point is that acreage is going to shrink if this doesn't work on both sides, both ends of the, which changes the revenue, huh?
Do you have an idea that it won't work, or you're just...
No, I'm just concerned that if it, right now, it is wetland.
Sure.
So, to my assumption, I'm going to assume, unless I see otherwise, it's wetland. Fair?
Yeah, and I don't know if it's wetland, or if it's just, that's where the current pond is, and whether that pond is movable, or you could add to it for drainage from other areas. That's what we don't know for sure. And that's why we kind of use the hyphenated, I think, wetland pond, but it would be redefined into a stormwater, because we're talking about more developed parcels, probably talking more concrete and asphalt covering the commercially, or commercial or retail or multifamily, whatever it would be developed for, would probably have more need for stormwater, like you said.
Which is fine, I'm just going off the maps right now, so.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, you're, see, you're adding that you have the limited access behind the emergency access off the back side on Tower.
Yes.
Are you anticipating you would close the one that comes off of County Road F, currently comes there?
I, I think that's what is being visualized here, but again, with what the mayor said, if there is access that's required off County F, then it wouldn't be removed and would somehow be worked into, however that one lot would be developed, and whether it would have some kind of easement with the other lots to be able to use that and so forth. Again, more details that we would need to refine, but I had forgotten that we, that that is on the plan, a limited emergency access drive. I think that's probably required by law.
Have you done any traffic studies?
Not specific, not lately, I don't think. I think there was some preliminary ones done a couple of years ago.
So, you don't have any idea how many more vehicles or buses will be going down Carmichael?
I think we had that two years ago, but I don't, I don't think we...
Right. We've done some preliminary use of, basically, there's three routes, you know, three accesses over I-94. If you're going to build a school south of I-94, it's going to be 11th Street, Carmichael, and then Exit Four.
What percentage of the high school students live north of 94?
That, I can't answer off the top of my head.
I think last time it was 70 percent. I think it was asked last time. John, do you remember?
Yeah, it was 70 percent.
Was that the right number?
Yeah, give or take, yeah.
Something like that.
I'm a bit hyper.
Yeah. Mary, do you know? No?
Careful.
Is that, okay. Tom knows, but he isn't going to say.
All right. I'll sell the information to you.
What did he say?
He said he'll sell you the info.
Checks in the mail.
We'll do a bargain.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Any School Board members have any?
Well, I just think that, you know, to the same question, how many students live north of 94? How many available parcels are there above 94? And I think that's part of the reason we're together tonight is, you know, we've had a pretty exhaustive search of many different pieces of property, and, you know, it leads to a variety of different conclusions. And ultimately, it seems like it comes down to the opportunity where we need to work together with the city. And, you know, I think Jamie had mentioned last time, you know, we don't want to talk about the past, but it seemed like there's an opportunity for us all to work together and have better discussions as a group. Maybe it's just a small-town kid in me, but, you know, where I grew up, a lot of what was built around the community and the city was the school and the kids and the opportunity that they had for learning. And, you know, when we came here as, as new parents, looking for a new place to, to build and, and build our lives, that was a big part of our decision. So, you know, for, from my perspective and, and, you know, seeing that we've had a couple of years now go past us, since we've, you know, had the referendum, that there's an opportunity for us to, to maybe take a different approach and have, you know, good conversation, good open dialogue, which we're having tonight. And, you know, I think that there's a lot of questions that we have, the, the available land that we have out there, the studies. I think that's a very good point, Tom, because I know that there were some concerns brought up from various members in town. So, those are all very good discussion points for us to, you know, take a look at for some potential next steps, if it's something that we think is, you know, a valid opportunity for us to continue to talk about.
So, does it seem like an unreasonable request to have a, a plan for the 33 acres for us?
Well, again, it's like, what do you want to see in the plan? I mean, that would be...
We need a proposal, someone understands, that understands zoning, that needs, if there's going to be a change in zoning, a request for the change in zoning. The owners of the property are the ones can, that have to come in and ask, request a change in zoning. And so, for me, I would like to see a plan that we could know what kind of revenue the city is going to generate off of this property. And I think we all saw what we had last time that Mr. Darnold put together, best-case scenario over, and I know it's not going to happen next week or next year, but almost a million dollars in, in revenue that could be generated from private development. And I know people say that'll never happen, but you know, when I came to town, the Carmichael interchange, I was told that that would never be developed. Anybody that goes out there is crazy, because it's out of town, and it'll never happen. Well, look what's happened at the Carmichael interchange. So, the idea that this piece of property will never be developed is not, I don't think, a reasonable assumption. So, I guess I just, I, I like to see some sort of plan. I had talked with, and I think you've talked to the individual, at one time, he had brought in a plan. I never kept the plan, but he had, he had different uses of that land, and I, I don't know where that's at, if that's dead or not dead, or what that plan is. So, I've never heard back from him. So, that, to me, that would be an important part for me and for the city.
Okay. And just follow up, because I want to get, see if we can get more specifics, so that we're not playing guessing games or anything like that. First of all, the million dollars, was that like overall revenue generated off that?
I'd give you a copy of that. I think, I think there was a copy given last time, and I'll give you a, a copy of this. This was done February 9th, 2012. So, I'll give you a copy of that. Yeah, it was out of the best-case scenario, yeah.
For the total, though, I mean, because that, the property tax doesn't go all over the city, proximately.
No, no, no. I'm talking about totally taxed. You get 50 percent of it, so.
We're incented to...
You get 50 percent of anything that's developed within the city.
No, I mean, we're, we're also incented to drive a strong tax base ourselves, so, you know, we're in this together from that standpoint.
Right. That's why we don't want to use an acre more than we need for the school, so that we can keep it zoned. And that's why you said that, a request for zoning. Just to be clear, there's not going to be any request for rezoning that portion that's shaded in yellow. It's currently zoned, commercial.
Not necessarily, unless there's some multifamily use that could be utilized in that. I don't think you can say that there's no change in zoning there.
Well, no, there wouldn't be an immediate, but you're right. You, you want to know longer range.
Depending on the development plan, there may be, you know.
Right.
And if it's multifamily, it generates less revenue for this.
Well, again, since you asked the question, it was a potential loss of tax revenue, based on what Mr. Darnold did, and I think he was conservative, on a commercial basis, the School District would lose $515,000 a year. The City of Hudson would lose $318,000 a year. St. Croix County would lose 262. The vocational school, 83,000. And the State of Wisconsin, 12,000. That's the best-case scenario. He said the worst-case scenario would be 245,000 to the School District, 151 to the City of Hudson, 124,000, 39,000 to vocational district, and 5,700 to the State of Wisconsin. So...
And that was if the whole 130 acres was taken off the tax rolls.
Well, we, we also know that there's a, I don't know, the exact number on the hill is not developable. I mean, it's not usable. So, you can't really utilize that, those, those pieces of property, or it's not buildable, so.
But we haven't had any further analysis beyond that.
No.
Either way, developed as far as, because, you know, and I'm just venturing a guess, not being a commercial developer, but I would think the land that's closest to Carmichael would have the highest, you know, value to, whether it's retail, commercial, however it would be used. But you're right, I think that that hillside, with its deep slopes, is not going to have much taxable value at all, either way, and that's why part of this proposal is that the school would be buying that, that portion of it.
I wonder if I could just offer maybe a question and maybe a response to, you know, to boil this down, the school is looking for land that's feasible to create a campus that we believe the community has asked for. The city is looking for the opportunity to build its tax, taxable income. It would be helpful, I think, for us as a School District to understand what the city's, you know, what is it, how much, you know, is, is being looked at, and what would be the minimum amount that's possible to tell us what the city's looking for... to tell us what the city's looking for in terms of increased tax revenue from this, this property. That way, we can go back and look at, is it possible for us to create this kind of projection or this development and determine if we can meet that, that requirement? Because right now, we're discussing these two concepts without really kind of understanding specifically what the needs are for the city.
Well, yeah, I think, I think we can come up with that number for you. We'll have to get back to you on that. It's, it's 133 acres is about one-third of the commercial property available for sale in the, in the city of Hudson. The land outside of the city is not ours to develop without annexation, and only the people that own the land are going to come and ask us for annexation. We cannot, we don't go out and annex land without being requested. So, that's a big chunk. It's almost a third of the developable land, which is a, again, our responsibility as a city is to look out for the city, number one, and then the school district will be number two for us. I mean, it's a community and we want to get along.
Sure.
There's no doubt about that. And, you know, just as a, as a, you know, kind of the question on the, on the dollar amounts, currently, we have 157 acres that the school district owns within the city of Hudson, generating no taxes. So, you know, for us, and I don't want to say anybody's implying that we're not good corporate citizens and trying to work with the school, we have 157 acres off the tax roll right now, which is part of our community, and it's a good part of our community.
Mayor Burchill, we want to be, as a, you know, the board, we want, this has to be, this has to work for the city. This has to be, we don't want to do this unless it's good for the city.
Yep.
And we're not, you know, so that's-
We want it to work too. It's got to go both ways. And so, that's why I'm asking to say, what kind of development, what can we possibly generate out of there? And, Tom, I'll get that number back to you.
Sure. I think it's, I think it's mutually understood, I think, by both, both party entities here that we need each other. I mean, I think the city needs the school. You're absolutely right about the 157 acres that's not taxable land. That's in the negative column. In the positive column, the school attracts people to this community. And so that's a positive for us as a community. And that, that does affect the tax base in our community. So it's kind of a give and take. We need you. I think you need us. We want to work together. We need to understand what you need so we can see if we can make this work.
I guess what I was trying to get to, Tom, is we have five municipalities within our school district. And 90 percent of the land is within one municipality, and that's the city of Hudson. We're required to police, we're required to snowplow, and I don't think there's anybody on the school board that lives within the city of Hudson. Is there? Does anybody live in the city of Hudson? I don't think so. So, when something comes and be taxed, the citizens of Hudson, the city proper, pay a higher percentage of that because it's coming off their tax rolls. So, what I'm trying to do is, the town of Hudson is the second biggest population base within our, our community. There's no schools in that area. And a lot of it has to do with city sewer and water, and I understand that. But, it always comes back to the city. It's our, you know, it's going to be a better place to live. But the citizens here, and that's what we're trying to look out for. We're, we're trying to represent them.
What we'd like to, you know, again, it's going back to your point around, you know, seeing, seeing a, you know, maybe a, a plan with more specifics around numbers and tax revenues, is we like, we like to see a plan, and again, we're not developers, the plan I like to see is, although it's a subset of the total, total amount of land, that because of the school being there and driving, driving more traffic, that potentially, we could generate, you know, as much tax revenue with a smaller parcel of land.
That's hopeful, that's hopefully why we're talking, right?
You know, that's, that's the idea, you know, if we, you know, again, with, the numbers have to bear themselves out, right?
But where does it weigh off to the amount of tax increase for the city residents with building the school and as well, I mean, there's, there's a threshold there somewhere. You know what I'm saying?
There's definitely, definitely a give and take because, you know, for, when the school district can save money, that's also saving money for the city taxpayers. And so it's, we need to make this a win-win for both. And in the end, is the bottom line, the number of acres, whether it's 63 or 62 or 64 or 61? Or is it a matter of giving the city access to a future stream of income? And I think that, that's where Tom's questioned about the number. And you mentioned about, you know, where the schools are located currently. Generally, you put the schools where the people are, and that's kind of how the concept started. I mean, where, where we've got our, our school now. What we don't want to be is in a situation where we're putting the school and locking it in. We don't know how this future growth is necessarily going to come down and how fast it's going to come. We built a middle school, since I've been in this community, that we thought was going to last for generations, and it was filled in less than 15 years. Just looking at the UW, University of Wisconsin, did population projections for this, communities in the school district. North Hudson is projected in the next 26 years to go up 14 percent. Town of St. Joe, 22 percent. Town of Troy, 40 percent. Town of Hudson, 47 percent. And city of Hudson, I don't have my bifocals, but I think that's a 63 and a half percent is what the projected increase in the population, so.
Over what period of time, Jamie? 26 years?
26 years. And that's why we're hoping to build, we're thinking about where the school is going to be probably for the next, you know, multiple generations. I know that that's where the people that placed the current high school thought, but you have to remember that the current high school was not built just necessarily as a high school per se. First, it was a junior high, then they added the high school. And then we've done a lot of balancing and reconfiguring with what we currently have had. But now, we want to put something that's a bit more permanent, if you will, so that we're not back here. Maybe not, when I say "we," I don't expect to be on the school board for the next 26 years, but, you know, future school boards and future city councils are not struggling with this issue again. So we hopefully come up with a win-win solution.
I'd just like to say that, that I, I appreciate the work the school board has done in coming back to us with a proposal, which has obviously been worked on by you very hard. And it takes into consideration the fact that the city would like to generate income. And I think you've listened to that and come back with a proposal that does that. When it comes to taxpayer dollars, when I look at your proposal, I see the potential for a $4 million reduction in the purchase of the land. And if that's true, if you were generating $500,000 a year, that means it would take eight years to get back to even. In other words, we're saving $4 million upfront if we left this property totally as it is for commercial development and generated $500,000 a year. It would take us eight years to get back to, the taxpayers would have to wait eight years to come back to even. And so I think it, it, it has some potential when I look at it on the current dollars that we're going to save versus the long-term expenses that occur. I think that's significant when I look at it. Obviously, the city would not get, you know, the, the money it had before, which is 300 and some thousand dollars, but we would generate $70,000 if the remaining property could be generated. And again, in current terms, I think that's also significant. So, I, I look at this and say, if we get our financial director involved in it and maybe look at it a little differently on a cash flow basis and, and current terms, it, it may be interesting. I don't know, but I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the $4 million savings and its tax dollar savings, city of Hudson people would save those taxes also. So, we wouldn't be paying that. We would be saving money. So, I, I find it interesting. I'd like our financial director to look at it because I'm not that good at all the finances, but I do appreciate what I see and I do appreciate the work the school board's done.
Jim, you were going to say-
Yeah, I think this, this spring, there was a study that came out from the state on terms of population growth. And Jamie quoted percentages, but if you look at the raw numbers, the increase, it's even more significant that Hudson is going to grow more than any of the surrounding areas. The growth up north, according to them, is going to be minimal. St. Joe may double, but that's not anywhere near. Hudson's going to add 7,000, 8,000 people over the next 10 to 15 years. So that's, you know, that's their projection. And looking at the, at the whole area, it seems to me the growth is going to be south of 94.
So, this growth conversation, the current kindergarten class is at 308 people, 308 kids. I know this because my daughter is going to be entering the current kindergarten class. The EP Rock classroom size is going to be between 18 and 19 kids a class. That's the most populated school in the district. That's the lowest the numbers have been since the current principal there has been in that, in that, in that role. Never been that low. The projection for the kindergarten class for this year during the Rivercrest referendum was 475 children for this year. That's 40 percent off. So when I hear future projections, I take that kind of wishy-washy because it's already 40 percent off. I mean, that's, that was, that's reported everywhere too. That, that was reported in the paper via the school district. And it's factual for the situation now. Maybe 20 more students will come in this year? You know, over the summer? But, the projections are 40 percent off the way I see it right now. So, and the acreage thing that you brought up, Jamie, the reason why I brought up the, the wetlands is because if 60 acres or 62 acres or 59 acres is not the purpose here, so we have a government, the government center land was, I can't remember anymore, I know it's history, but it was 55 acres, I think. So if acreage isn't, is the, is not that important as, as far as the future of our students, then why wouldn't that be considered since it's already off the tax rolls? Or why wouldn't we look at a Plan B at the farmland across from Rivercrest where we can pipe in right away, right across, at minimal costs? I'm just curious where the plan, if, if this isn't going to work out, where the Plan B is? Especially if, it seems to me that acreage is more flexible than it first appeared.
Well, I didn't want you, go ahead, Brian, if you want to address it. So, Mary,
so I'm not a demographic expert, but there was a drop in births around the downturn in the economy. And if you look at births now back in our county in this area, they're actually high as they've ever been before, so.
In which area?
In the, like, the St. in the St. Croix County and this whole area, the births are back up at record numbers. So, again, we, you know, expertise is a way in there, but there is, there was a dip in kind of births around the, around the economic downturn, you know, so.
Sure, they were born here, but we don't know if they're going to be going to school in our district.
Yeah, I would say long, long term-
They can be born here and go and be in River Falls, you know?
Unfortunately, we're a real desirable place to live, so I think long-term, yeah, yeah.
You have to look at some numbers.
You do, you do. And that's the number I'm looking at is the current kindergarten enrollment.
No, no, there was, you know, but I'd say-
And the projections that were done for Rivercrest, which is, I voted for Rivercrest as a school to be put in on those projections.
Yeah.
And now I see these-
When you say those projections, what year were those, were those projections made?
2008. 2008, but they had projected out for this year's kindergarten class at 475.
Okay. Well, I'm not following you. You said the projections for, before Rivercrest-
To build the Rivercrest elementary school.
And what year was that built?
2008.
It was built in 2008, but I'm sure that referendum was 2006 or '07.
Sure, which I voted for in favor of Rivercrest based on those projections. But I, those are the only projections I have for your kindergarten classes brought out thus far. Okay? You're projecting for high school. I'm projecting for current-
Well, I think, we can get you new numbers. We can get you the new projections, because I think that there's been projections done in the last five years.
Just, I'd say, just big picture, we're, we're planning this for 25, 50 years. We're looking way out and it's always going to be, you know, ebbs and flows to any projection, but, you know, so. And as far as land, again, we kind of opened up with that. We didn't, we, we didn't want to go deliberate on every area we looked at, but we looked at 30 plus, or I don't know, 30 plus, but at least 30 different parcels. And looked at how to get children there and, and how to, you know, as Mayor Burchill talked about sewer and septic and those considerations. And we, we looked at a lot, and land is important to us. And we're, we're looking, you know, we think that 63 acres is kind of what we need to, to the program that we need and also have expandability. So it's very important to us. I don't want to minimize, the amount of acreage is very important to us, so. And the, and the fact that this acreage is flat and is really developable, it works for our, our program is, is one of the reasons we're back at the table, actually, so.
Then I guess the key is that wetland because you'll be below that if you're, if it's there. And the next flattest piece of land I see is that farmland next door.
Randy?
I want to thank the school board for coming with us and coming in to have this conversation with us. It opens up a dialogue for us to, you know, explore this a lot more. Obviously, there's a lot of questions that have to be answered. I think you've done a good job at presenting something for us that we had asked for before. And I would agree with Rich that, you know, it's enticing to look at the numbers and, and I want to see how far we can go with it. But there's a lot of questions to be answered, and I think the one that I also, in the past, had concerns of is the traffic flow. We've just touched on it. And then I just heard Mr. Bell, I think, you said, you know, we're willing to work and sit down and kind of work out maybe the infrastructure around that area. If that's so, that's a good, that's a good thing.
For sure, yeah.
Because the number one thing my constituents have emailed me, and I've got three of them right here, and they're saying, "It's bad enough over there. We can't have a school over there with uneducated drivers, buses, et cetera, et cetera." I understand there's three points to get to it. And I also understand that no matter where we put it, we're going to have to bus people. I've also brought the concern up of walkers and bikers and putting them on Carmichael or on any other road out there. It's a safety issue.
Yeah.
And that's one big concern that has to be addressed. The other one is, obviously, the tax money and what's coming down the road, so we get, you guys kind of get a nod from us and said, "Okay, let's move forward with it." All of a sudden, we get a $90 million referendum coming to our citizens. Now, you can tell me all about the smoke and mirrors, about the, we're going to retire the $40 million, but you're going to add that $40 million right back on top of it, plus another $40 million. So you're asking our residents for, for an $80 million to $90 million referendum, correct? You can't tell me you're retiring $40 million and it's just going to go away.
No, there's no, there's no magic here. So, I think the current proposal, some estimates we have were, I want to say they weren't 80, I want to say they were 63, 63 million.
Yeah, but there's an asterisk next to it. And the asterisk is for previously reported maintenance recommendations at Hudson High School that not, that need to be considered. On-site and off-site improvements like turn lanes into the school property if needed, excavating new construction areas, possible auditorium expenses in a newly constructed school building, possible pool or varsely athletic fields in a newly constructed school building, which is on the proposal. That's not in the referendum numbers.
For sure, but I'm just-
And the purchase and stuff of, or sale, sale of UU and, and all that. So the asterisk is really that.
Yeah.
So let me come back to my point about this whole, we have to keep these meetings going and move it forward and making sure that our public is, is in the information, they know it. They know what they are going to expect when they go in the voting booth for a referendum that I, we agreed to put on them for what amount of money? Because frankly, the economy's not much better for folks out there. I don't care what people say. It's getting better. The housing market's starting to improve. There's more houses going up for sale in the city. But there are questions. I like this plan. I've said that already, and I, and I think it's workable. I agree with Rich. We've got to get more hard numbers. But there are a lot of more questions to be answered.
We appreciate you sharing that with us and, you know, those are, those are areas that we can, we can work on, so.
Anybody else have?
I'd like to also thank everyone for coming.
Use the mic, John.
As the only person that was in favor of the last go-around, I would like to say it again, that I, I see this as a, an opportunity for the city, not a detriment. We now have more taxable land sitting there. This property's been sitting vacant since 2001. It's the only one of the dog tracks that was never on a visible site. It doesn't, if it was such a prime piece of property, I think somebody would have snagged it up already. And the price keeps going down, which is an opportunity not only for the city of Hudson, but the school district as well. When you look at the big, the big picture, we've just added a bunch of taxable land, thanks to Robson and Zeller over where the tour center was. We have an opportunity to annex the property where Walmart is. That's more taxable land. And Hudson is going to continue to grow. Where is it going to grow? Well, it can grow on the north side and the south side, but do you really want your high school not in Hudson? I mean, if you live in Hudson, do you want your house school in the town of Hudson? St. Joe township? I mean, you can drive out to St. Joe to go to high school. For me- For me, it just seems so much more logical and such a benefit to Hudson to have it at a spot that is highly visible, can draw a lot of traffic to it, business benefits from it. I just don't see the downside. You know, the tax revenue, yeah, it's going to be a short-term burn, I think, but I think in the long term for 26 years, I think we're going to see a really positive commitment to education and, you know, a diamond in the rough here, not just what used to be something that probably should have never been to begin with. So, I, from my standpoint, see this as a big opportunity for Hudson and the school district.
Thank you, John. Sandy?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments. A few months ago, the superintendent wrote a column in the Hudson paper stating that the district was not pursuing... There were some rumors out there about the district pursuing St. Croix Meadows. And so, there was a... She put an article in the paper about the district not pursuing St. Croix Meadows any longer, that we were not going to be doing it. And yet, here we are now talking about this again. I want to make it really clear that of all the board members here, I was not in favor of the school board reapproaching this issue with the city council. I spoke against it at the school board meetings that we had. I tried to explain my position, why I was against it. I asked... The city said no to this once. What happens if they say no again? Are we willing to go out another year or two and then run the risk of the city council members changing or school board members changing and the city saying no again after we've put another year or two into it? I objected to putting the city in the position that they're going to be put in again. I rose here, I believe, right after the planning committee last year and spoke, told you why I was opposed to this from the city's standpoint. And I want to just reiterate what my points were at that time. I objected to put the city in this position. First, the planning committee and the city council need to put the interests of the City of Hudson taxpayers before anything else. It isn't your job to think about what we're going to do to resolve school issues. Your job is to think about the fiduciary responsibility you owe to the City of Hudson taxpayers. Second, I believe that it's unfair for the school district to expect the City of Hudson to amend your comprehensive plan, which is what this would take. You'd have to amend your comprehensive master plan, I believe. There was discussion of that last time. You'll be giving up a fair amount of potential tax revenue, as Denny explained last time. And third, I think it's unfair of the school district to put the City of Hudson again in a potential no-win situation for the city. If you say no to this again, I mean, there's been a lot of buzz about this meeting, so if you say no to this again, the planning committee has only changed one person, so if the planning committee says no and the city council says no again, then you've got half the people in Hudson mad at you. If you say yes, then you've got the other half mad at you. So, it's pretty much a no-win situation for the city council. And I just think it's unfair for the school district to come back again and ask you for the same thing again, putting you in that no-win situation. My position hasn't changed. I'm opposed to this and I have spoken in opposition to it at all of the board meetings we've had. And I just want that clearly understood. Thank you.
Sandy, that's why we get the big bucks here. That's... We're okay with that, right?
Anybody else have anything?
I know the school board members get paid really big, too.
Yes, we do, Mayor Birchell. Thank you. Sandy, you know that we looked at multiple pieces of land, and the reason it circles back to St. Croix Meadows is it is the best value to the taxpayer at the lowest cost when you're looking at tax dollars supporting that school program. There have been multiple sites that we looked at, most of them in closed session, and when we kept circling back, that was the best economic decision. There was another point that you made, and I can't recall what it was, I'm sorry, but I mean, I do agree that the city council does need to look out for the taxpayer, but in response to what happened previously, I think coming back and asking council members and the mayor what they can support and what works for them, there was a lot of discussion in this last election about mixed use. And so, in hearing those conversations, our response back to them is what could we do that would support a mixed-use plan that could solve both problems? Both the district's problem for space in the district as well as the city's concern about bringing development that could support that tax base.
Thank you, Lynn.
May I respond?
Sure.
We did look at a lot of properties. And what has my position been? That we already own the best property in the whole area to put a high school, and it is where the existing high school is. There was not any option given to any of the public to add on and do something with the existing building. I was repeatedly bringing that up and being told that it couldn't be done until about six months ago when Hoffman Engineering finally came up with a plan. They drew it out. I believe you were at the meeting too where we saw the plan, the Hoffman plan up on the screen, to add on and expand and remodel the existing high school building after I'd been told for a year and a half it couldn't be done. That's been my position all along. And yes, we did look at a lot of different properties, but I still maintain we own the best property in the whole city for a high school. And there's plenty of room there to add on and expand and remodel the existing building, especially with the declining enrollments. And I know that there's discussion about that, whether or not that's going to continue. We looked at other properties, but my position has always been we already own the best one.
And I would just like to... Sandy, and I understand that's your position. You've made it very clear and you haven't wavered from that for years now. But it was true that we were not discussing St. Croix Meadows as a primary option. I mean, what we're here about tonight is to see if it's worthwhile. It's not even on the front burner. We're bringing it to the front burner, but whether it's going to stay there is really up to the city.
I understand.
And I really felt, and that's the way I ran for this position and even feel even more so since being in, we have an obligation to the taxpayers to bring the most cost-effective plan, you know? In the end, Randy's very concerned about what the total's going to be for the referendum, and that's why we're back here. You briefly mentioned about that about six months ago, there's an add-on, expand. Just to clarify, this was in regard to the options. When we were winnowing the options from three to one, was what options would there be to change the current high school? Well, one, change it to a 10-12 building. Number two, change it to an 8-9 building or change it to a 6-9 building. Those were the different options. And of those three, the most cost-effective was to convert it to an 8-9 building. And in doing so, it's not going to be quote "added on" to it. It's going to be remodeled, definitely, but with the different purposes, the repurposing of that building, the capacity is actually going to go down in that building to a level that I think is more in conformity with what the parking capacity is anyway at that site. But again, we're getting a little far afield. What the topic was for tonight was St. Croix Meadows. Is it something that we can make work for both the city? We're not trying to pound a square peg into a round hole. If this doesn't work for the city, then we want to be able to move on as a school board with whatever other options there may be.
I agree.
But we want to try and make this work first because I don't want to be in a situation a year from now or whenever that we're talking about another option and somebody says, well, why didn't you try to present a multi-use option and make it work for the city so that we could have a school closer to the city rather than out in the country? And that's why we're here.
I agree with you. I agree with you, Jamie. And I had no intention of discussing adding or remodeling the high school, but Lynn brought up the fact that we've looked at a lot of different properties other than... If she hadn't brought it up, I would never have mentioned it because it's not the subject that we're dealing with right here now.
Tom?
With the thought in mind of not trying to put a square peg into a round hole, I just wanted to say that when I ran for this seat, I talked to a lot of people in the third district, and I'll tell you, the sentiment was strongly against rezoning the dog track. And the reasons that the mayor has stated were primarily of concern to people. I also have a concern, are you aware of any place where this has been proposed, where there's a development in a school right next to it? What if somebody wants to come in with a project that is contrary to what the school would think was right for them? How would you handle that?
Well, we... I don't know. I can't speak for the whole board, but I wouldn't try to act as the city council. I think that that's where the city council's...
And that's a concern that we would have.
Well, I trust your judgment, Tom.
Thanks, Jamie.
All right. Is there any...
Yes. It's kind of interesting, because I ran at the same time and I ran the fourth district, and by far, the opinion was, what happened? Why didn't that go through? They didn't understand it at all, and they said it seems like a good idea. It was unquestionably, 80% of the people that I talked to were in favor of that rezoning. At best, it wasn't well explained. It wasn't... The whole thing did not go down well. But there's still a lot of question out there about why that didn't happen, so we really need to do a better job this time, saying we've walked through everything, we've checked it all out, here it is, we all agree. So, I think that's really important for the health of the city.
Well, I want to emphasize that this is also a different plan. We're not judging what the 2012 plan was and whether a vote for or against that was prudent or not prudent.
I think that's... And that's great. We can walk away from that decision and look at it in a whole new light.
I think somebody said the definition of insanity is trying to do the same thing over and over and expect different results. We're trying not to do that same thing over and over, coming forward differently.
So, my question, this is a great plan from my personal opinion, but even if we said go today, how long would it take to implement something like this? I mean, what year would my son or daughter be going to high school in the new high school?
You're forgetting the big hurdle.
I'm planning on adopting. Because I want to spend more money.
John, you're forgetting the big hurdle of the referendum.
There are plenty of hurdles here. I'm just saying, if everything were to go as someone would hope, how soon would somebody be going to high school in this?
What I think are the estimates were is, at best, would be a two to two-and-a-half-year period post-referendum. So, if we were closer to three years, maybe. I mean, I don't want to be overly optimistic, but, you know, just to... If from, you know, we're talking about, we're in 2014. I don't know that we would have a building in place in 2017, assuming that we can hit all these timetables. Again, part of it is being able to get the specifics that the mayor's talking about, Mary's talking about, Randy's talking about, being able to come back and still, you know, our goal has been, you know, November for a referendum. That's when we want to do it, is when, during the general election. That would be our goal. It's been our goal. I can't say that we're definitely going to hit that, but we're going to try our best.
So, it could be 2018 before you were hedging your bets. Okay. People ask me all the time, I'm like, I really don't know. But that's four years from now, so...
Three years from referendum.
Yeah, instead of... I learned in construction that you don't use necessarily the most optimistic date. We try to add to that whenever possible.
Just to piggyback quickly on what Randy said and what you just said, I would hope to see if there is a referendum that would be during the general election. I think that's when the most voters come out to vote. Let's be fair about that. And Lynn and I have talked privately about stuff at times, and one of the things I mentioned to Lynn that she said, well, why didn't you mention that before? Is that one of the reasons for my vote last time was that taxpayers did not receive the full picture. I mean, I know we've made this comment already, but I feel very strongly on if there is a referendum, that the referendum states, not what it states, but what would be in there would have the land purchased, the total cost of the building, not the asterisk deal and everything, you know? I mean, like the whole price, the whole package. Is it 80 million? Is it 62 million? Is it 90 million? I don't care. I just want to see it all. If something where that, if something like that were to pass in my district, I would have that obligation to my constituents then to say, okay. Because then I feel like my constituents actually got all the information. Last time, I didn't feel like they did. Last time, I felt like I had more than them, so I rolled the dice and, you know, that's how...
Couldn't agree more.
Anything else? I think we wanted to kind of keep it to an hour, and we're pretty close to that hour or over the hour.
Well, the only thing next would be next steps is, depending on how long, what would be your timetable for another meeting? You suggested maybe we... Maybe the school hosts this time, but...
Maybe there's more room out at the school. Pardon?
Well, there is a procedure for submitting an application for rezoning and that kind of thing. And those kinds of discussions, you know, and questions and so forth can be discussed and worked on in the plan commission. I don't know that it has to be a joint meeting.
Well, I think...
...for moving this forward.
If you want to apply for zoning, the owner of the property has to apply for the zoning change, which goes to the planning commission. But if we... I don't know if you feel like you have a sense of what the council... I don't think we've asked them to make a choice tonight. I think some have expressed their opinion where they're at and others haven't. So, if we want to get back together another time to... If we have some more information, why don't you and I see... You get your feedback from your board and I'll get the feedback from the city council, whether or not... Or you can go directly to the planning commission.
All right. Very good.
That seems fair. Anything else?
Can we just agree on the takeaways? You know, I've got traffic flow, safety issues, you know, the revenue potential. We had some discussions around revenue potential. If you put one plan together, it's one option. Would you want to see two options, three options?
Last time, he used two. He used a light industrial and he did a commercial.
Okay.
And I'm sure Danny would be happy to sit down and... But again, I think you need to have somebody, and I'm not trying to... That you couldn't do it, Bruce, but I would think...
You're not going to offend me.
Because I think you should have a developer that does this for a living. I mean, I think they're the easiest and they understand the zoning and all those other issues.
Can we request all three? I mean, multifamily residential is certainly an option.
It is.
Yes.
It is. And we had that discussion. I mean, we... Again, these actions cost dollars.
Sure.
You know, when we were talking about UU, we came to a decision that we're spending money here for something that many of us didn't feel was right. So, you see a for-sale sign out there today and action is being taken. So, we want to move as quick as we can, so the more options we're bringing forward now, the faster we hopefully can get to a point where November is a realistic opportunity.
One of the things you may want to look at, Bruce, is the DOT. We're still waiting on the DOT on the Carmichael 94 interchange, significant input from them on the annexation of that corner.
Okay.
So, that's... The traffic is... The DOT will not allow that intersection to fail.
Are you suggesting I should go lobby for that?